Very good. So, before I accept the agenda, we'd like to table two items that are on it, which I believe are nine point five and nine point six. And with that, could I get a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
So moved.
All right, Brian. Second, Maura. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, well, we begin with some district updates. I know we have some great news to share. I'm thinking of sports events over the weekend, but...
Yes, I do have. So, interestingly enough, tonight, there's a lot to talk about, but we also have our committee reports. So, I think a lot of the work that Rena, Carol, and I would present on will surface through those reports. But, in the spirit of what Mr. Hannett indicated, we did have a very exciting weekend that was filled on art side and athletic competition. You know, when we think of the IHS Fall Drama Club presentation, it's quick to jump, easy to jump to the Friday and Saturday shows. And actually, Rena, Carol, and I were in attendance on Friday night and thoroughly enjoyed the play. And, you know, to step back and think about, not only just where our kids so, so strong and so talented in their work, and to think about the work of Stephen and all that he did to produce the show and did such a fine job. You think about heavy content of Radium Girls and really how they brought it to life. And I can tell you personally, I got lost in the story. And, you know, it didn't feel like at times you were sitting in, you know, the Irvington Campus Theater. The kids did a fabulous job. And so, Friday and Saturday night were exceptional. Stephen and all the kids deserve all the accolades in the world for a wonderful, successful production. But, before that even happened, on Thursday night, there was a tremendous experience that was provided, which was a dinner and theater. And a tremendous experience that was put on, not only by the Drama Club, but with so many partnerships. An experience that was extended to the seniors in our community, where we welcomed over forty folks to come in for free dinner and to see the show. And in doing so, like I talk about partnerships, we think of students that were in the freshman class that were involved. We think of IFA supporting the dinner for that evening. But then also students in our VIP program in the high school and the middle school, as well as Mr. Kendall's class at the middle school that were just engaged in all aspects of it, from decorations to centerpieces to place mats, the helping with serving and the like. It was a tremendous school experience. It was great to see that connection with that section of our community. And the turnout was better than expected, and folks are already asking, are we going to do it again? So, I think we've already started a tremendous tradition here in Irvington, where there's been a lot of enthusiasm. So, just as we send our accolades to all of our student performers and Mr. D Giovanni, we also have to think of that broader group that made Thursday night so special and send our thanks to them. And it was exciting to see, you know, the seniors in our community to come forward and join in that experience. As Mr. Hannett also referenced, there were a lot of great accomplishments in athletics. We had our swim team, which is a combined team with Sleepy Hollow, Hastings, Edgemont, and of course, Irvington, goes by the acronym Shetty, and where they won the sectional championship. So, we have some proud involved parents up here as well. So, kudos to the girls' swim team. Our volleyball team also competed in the sectional semifinals last week, but came up a little bit short, losing 3-1 to Ardsley. And we extend our congratulations to them on that tremendous run to the playoffs. And then our Irvington Boys Cross Country Team on Saturday captured the Class C Section Championship. The team came in ranked number eleven in New York State Class C going into the race. And they have finished ahead of numbers nine and number six teams, Dobbs Ferry and Pleasantville respectively. And we had seven runners placed in the top thirty of one hundred thirty that were in the race. Our girls also placed fifth in Class C and did a great job and had a great season as well. So, we extend our congratulations to all of our fall student athletes. We look forward to the opportunity to welcome them for acknowledgement at a future Board of Education meeting.
Wonderful.
That's it for this evening.
Okay. I hope our audience will want to stick around for our committee reports. We have lots of interesting things to share. But, I would like to give the opportunity to actually do the committee comment first. So, if you have a comment that you would like to share, if you could stand at the microphone, provide your name. And we ask that each person keep their comments or questions to three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Hannett. My name is Eric Ollie. I live in Irvington. I have two children in the district, and I've lived here since 2000, the year 2000. I had shared my complete thoughts about the informational process regarding the high school master schedule in email to Principal Cohen, Assistant Principal Samuelson, the district administration team, and the Board of Education. But would like to summarize what I said for this meeting tonight. Firstly, Principal Cohen is to be commended for a very informative session in September of 2017 regarding the possibilities for changing the high school master schedule. He presented a lot of information on a complicated subject that most people who were here for the first time. And thus, there was not a lot of discussion that took place. It was a nice beginning to a campaign to engage our entire current community of stakeholders. And second, while the work of the scheduling committee continued to move forward, there was no more information or engagement offered by the administration. There's a record of inquiries about the master schedule from both IMS and IHS PAC meetings during the 2017-2018 school year. The March 2018 IHS PAC notes indicate that Principal Cohen responded that information about the master schedule process would be forthcoming. Yet, no meeting was scheduled and no additional information or updates were given to the community until May 3, 2018, when Principal Cohen announced to high school and middle school parents, who were included for the first time in communication, the middle school parents were included for the first time in communication from Principal Cohen, that a master schedule information night would be held on May 10, 2018. Unfortunately, that meeting was subsequently canceled on May 7, 2018, and it was never rescheduled. Thirdly, and perhaps most troubling to me, is that anyone would represent the aforementioned chronology of events as engaging the community. This simply has not been aligned with the published district administrative goal that clearly pledged to engage, inform, and educate district stakeholders. Finally, my wife and I are actually very curious to learn about new scheduling formats and what they have to offer our students. We've even been encouraged by information that we have gathered on our own from stakeholders in other districts and from friends who teach in schools with block schedules. We are not fundamentally against changing the master schedule, and we have spoken to many stakeholders who feel the same way. We are, however, very concerned that in the fifteen months between September 11, 2017, and December 11, 2018, when the next meeting is scheduled, no information or updates about the master schedule came from our administration. Bypassing the process of engagement during this period is simply not acceptable. We've missed an opportunity to educate the community, to bring them together to help solve a problem. And instead, we are dismissing an obligation to the process. And this dismissal can only create with division, can only result in division within our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ollie.
I am definitely not as tall as Eric. Just start with that. Tanya Hunt, Fifty Four Station Road, also a resident of Irvington since 2000. I also have one, one left in the district, a junior. So, for me, this is unlikely to have a large effect for me personally, but I too wanted to speak about the master schedule. First of all, I want to say thank you very, very much to the entire board and the administrators for all the work that you've done thus far on the master schedule. I know it has been a process and that a lot has gone into it so far. I agree, though, with Eric's points that he's spoken about tonight. In my opinion, the proposed schedule and a change of this magnitude deserves a full campaign of engagement with students, teachers, and parents. The lack of information sharing for more than a year requires that now an effort be made to review the work done thus far, and then multiple opportunities provided for input. Again, I thank you all for everything you do and all the time that I know you give to serving this community. I have sat in your seats, and I know what you sacrifice in time with your families to serve our community, and it is greatly appreciated. To the administrators, thank you again. And I hope we can take a little bit of a step back here and consider more opportunities for input on this very important topic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Does anyone else like to speak?
Well, thank you very much. As we shared at our prior meeting, you attended, Ms. Ollie, there certainly has been a gap in communication and that the board very much appreciates the hard work that the administration and the committee has done in this specific initiative, but similarly shares the values that a process of engagement is very important. And that's a commitment in Mr. Cohen's recent letter that he's made, and that's one that we look to see executed in terms of, you know, the upcoming presentation and the subsequent communications. So, we appreciate what you've shared, and we hear it. So, thank you.
Okay, so we will move to our committee and liaison reports. And we'll go alphabetically. And one of our most significant workloads for a committee, the buildings and grounds.
Okay. On October 23, the committee met here in the district offices with H2M and Triton. We reviewed, we kind of prioritized, we had our top fourteen projects that we identified, and we went through the various projects. Hold on, I'm going to look at my notes here, if you don't mind. Sorry about this. We reviewed our top fourteen projects, we prioritize, I should say, top fourteen projects. We received some, we received pricing on the projects, estimates, thank you, that's a better word, thank you, on these projects. And we went through each of them. And H2M and Triton has to go back now and answer a bunch of questions that we have on them. Nothing yet to put in front of the board, to be clear. There are a lot of outstanding issues. For example, air conditioning is something that's been very important to the committee and to people who sat on the, the spring committees with various stakeholders. One of the outstanding issues is something called Phase Three, bringing in power into Dow's lane, if we can, with ConEd, to see if it's even an option.
Before you could ever do air conditioning?
Before we can even entertain any of the possibilities, not just air conditioning. There are different things that we can do that we're looking into possibly cooling down as a possibility in this bond. That's an example. LED lights, other energy-saving initiatives. There's a lot that we are still going through. So, we had this meeting on the 23rd, going through all of these projects. Then, over that weekend, Brian, myself, and Deb met at Brian's house to try to go through all of this, all the cost estimates. We, Deb was very nice and took the notes, and we compiled a list of questions that we had from this meeting that we had on the 23rd. And Carol arranged for a conference call, and we sat in district and on the phone, various locations on a conference call. And kind of like, you know, went through the presentation that they gave us on the 23rd, asked our questions. And now, they've got some more work to do for us. And then, we are meeting on...
Thursday.
This Thursday? No, we're meeting this Thursday. Sorry, I thought the meeting before our board meeting on the 20th was first. That's the second one. Okay. There's been a lot of meetings going on.
You're working hard.
Yeah, sorry.
It's a big, it's a huge initiative.
Right.
And so, just a couple of questions, a reminder. So, H2M is the architectural firm. Triton is the construction...
Construction.
...manager. We've talked about a potential bond that would be debt service neutral, meaning that that's retiring and new debt is, would replace it with this bond of being in the range of fourteen, sixteen million dollars.
Probably a little bit more.
Maybe even a little bit more. And partly, that's because, are those fourteen that you were looking at, are those all adable? Meaning that the state would...
Everything is adable, except probably the maintenance garage.
Okay. So, and in that case, the ones that are adable, the state would provide twenty-nine percent? And so, subsequent to these, the work that you're doing now, sort of trying to vet and ask questions, there'll be a presentation at a board meeting. And from there, the rest of the board and community members would have a chance to begin to ask questions as well?
Correct. Similar to the process the last time around, there will be a presentation made to the board with recommendations. But, everything is on the table, and it's for a public discussion. And, you know, if need be, subsequent meetings, if needed, to, you know, formulate the bond.
And so, between the spring committee and the work you've been doing, there's been as many as fifty different projects you're potentially looking at in fourteen, which you're...
Right. I believe the project, I believe the list that the committee came up with, fifty-one total different ideas.
There might have been more.
Yeah, I think it was a...
Six, I don't know. Some, yeah.
But it's a lot to sift through. And so, not to flood us with it, you're doing this work, but at a certain, at that stage, when you bring it to us, there's a timeframe that's adequate for the board and the community to understand and provide input.
To understand, to have input for every, right. And we also intend on also presenting this back to the original committee from the spring to get their feedback also on the various projects and where we are.
Great. Thank you.
Does anyone have anything else?
I don't think so. I mean, I think the only other thing to kind of, to give the perspective to is that we did work with a very large list. And then, what we thought was important was to get the construction manager then to price what we're calling the top fourteen items. And those fourteen are coming not only from the committee, but from our administrators who are telling us that this is work that has to be done...
Right.
...in our school district and maintain our facilities, or to supplement the security that we already have at our different schools. So, those fourteen items are being, estimates are being provided. And we're looking to say, okay, if this is going to be cost neutral, how much are these fourteen items going to cost? Is it fifteen million? Is it less than fifteen million? And then, once those fourteen get estimated and we know what the costs are at this early juncture, then we're going to go back and look at the list again and say, from that larger list, what now do we believe we should add to the bond? So, we're being, we're taking it step by step. So, when we make the presentation to the board, you're actually going to have the numbers associated with these items so that we feel like our costs are going to come in exactly what we're going to tell the public if we're going to be bidding at.
Yeah, I mean, with all this work and a lot of it, there'll be, I mean, that'll be the tough pieces, that there'll be pieces that some community members or some trustees or some administrators think are, should be on that list. And it'll be a challenge that we'll have to meet in terms of, I think, the argument I would make, because it's one we have to discuss more fully, is, you know, it's really important to stay at that debt service neutral level, even though there will be pressure to do more. But that's a conversation for another day. All right, thanks. The Communications Committee.
Thanks, Michael. As you can imagine, the Communications Committee is focused right now on how to support the effort of presenting a bond proposal to the public. So, currently, in the meeting on the 24th of October, we looked at how we can do that most effectively. And since a lot of the information, which Maria has pointed out, isn't complete yet, we're trying to get a plan in place of different actions that'll need to happen, of different types of information need that various members of the community will need, as well as the timing of producing those things through the administration. So, trying to, trying to look at these things ahead of time rather than being caught behind the eight ball, as it were. I don't, I don't think we need to go into the kind of detail that we did on B and G unless, unless anyone on the board...
Some of those things include having things on our website, having an FAQ, having public forums, so that...
If you want to. So, once, so that, also, we did with the, with the full committee, and Carol, Carol Stein was also with us to present on basically exactly what Maria was talking about in terms of where, where the process was, so that we also had an idea of that. And then, because the Communications Committee has worked, obviously, in an ongoing way with the website, the reboot of the website, we looked at the end of the meeting at where the, which particular pieces are being focused on and where new material is being posted on the Irvington website. And I believe that the two areas where new information was being added were people personnel and...
And then, build out a school-based library pages as well.
So, library media resources as well. So, sort of looking at an ongoing project and then getting started on this bigger effort that's going to go out over the next several months, obviously, to support the bond.
All right, thank you. And so, with the website, I guess, over the course of the year, there'll be different pages that get built out with more information. The next committee is Curriculum Committee.
Happy Halloween. We convened on October 31st.
No one was in costume.
No one was in costume.
An opportunity missed.
It was an opportunity missed. But, the agenda was packed with three key items, one being the Elementary World Language Planning Overview. The second piece was an update on Amplify Pilot, Amplify being the K through H science program being piloted currently. And the third was a debrief on the technology presentation, which didn't get as much attention as it should have. So, I'll allow Beth to sort of fill in those final pieces there before she'd like. But the bulk of the meeting, of the committee meeting, really focused on the first and the second piece. The Elementary World Language Overview, lots to talk about. I'll give you an overview here. If you have questions, we can address them, I suppose. I don't know how much detail to give in this report, but it was a very chock-full conversation. The, there's a committee of about fifteen folks, including both teachers and administrators at all levels, including the middle school, high school. I presume it was the language chair, right, is on that, including Rena and, again, teachers from all grade levels to inform the process. They came with three, after much research and deliberation and visiting and so forth, there were three models that were presented, one being a FLEX program, one being a FLESS program, and the third being immersion. At a future meeting, Rena and the administration are going to present their suggestion to us, which we'll get into at that time. So, it's not to bog down this conversation. But, in short, the, I will say that the immersion program was one that wasn't sort of completely feasible as per the research. So, there'll be more discussion about the FLEX versus the FLESS program when we present it. The Ampli, that was the bulk of that. The Amplify Pilot, just a quick update, the training for the kindergarten and first grade teachers is completed, was completed earlier. Middle school training is, was being facilitated last week. We'll hear more about that, I imagine, in an update from Rena. We are looking for experiential or perception data to help inform next steps from the different teachers involved. And we got stuck on a nice piece of the conversation, sort of tied to the technology presentation in regards to the difference in laboratory experiences in Amplify versus traditional self-made curriculum or prior textbook curriculum, et cetera. You know, simulation labs versus hands-on labs, what are the differences between them? Amplify has combinations of both, leans heavily in the simulated laboratory experiences. Frogger section being one that we talked about prominently. Very few people cut open the frogs nowadays. They do it on the screen and they move pieces, et cetera. So, just to emphasize again that the district is being very thoughtful in the implementation in terms of a scaled approach, being piloting one unit and then evaluating that and then moving forward. And that was the meat of the meeting. There was one piece on the technology that I could articulate much better than me.
To talk to a little bit more, we visited the piece of the...
From our last board meeting, and we looked carefully, first of all, at the piece we had talked about at the tech meeting, about how do you provide the one-to-one experience for the Amplify experience. And then, about bins versus carts, and going to be experienced by, at least, I think it's one module per grade throughout next year. So, it's going to be a very meaty experience. And we did go back and I think successfully talked about the information that was provided about the K through three computer science information that had come up at the end of our last meeting. And also about some of the other issues we had talked about, about middle school provision. But, all of this, you know, as we've discussed, there is a tech plan that's underway right now. And the board will be reported out to, as that, that's a big project for the administration on all of those pieces. Would you say that's about right?
That's exactly what I wanted you to say.
Glad I made you happy.
Couldn't have been more. So, yeah, that's, that was our meeting on a happy Halloween.
Yes, thank you. That was great. Now, it gets a little harder to see here. You know, we have someone, an artist, that could even help us with this. Maybe, are there any updates from Community Advisory Board or I.A.S.?
Wait, you forgot about policies.
Policy. Oh, see, I turned the page.
Michael, even much I love policy.
Have a look at this.
That's only because it was, it was a very short policy meeting.
It's hidden behind the staple.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
All right. I'm not offended. It's okay. Honestly...
I shouldn't rely on the agenda.
Yeah, we really, we really actually did not have a very long meeting. And there's not much to report, other than the fact that we are continuing to work on Section 4000. We, there's about fifty policies within that section, and we are up to policy, what is that, forty-seven-ten. We looked at grading systems, not, not, not much discussion, not many edits. It's, that policy will be presented soon to the board. And forty-seven-fifty, promotion and retention of students. We only have a few more policies in the 4000 series, and then we move on to 5000 series, which only has four policies in it. So, our objective, come hell or high water, is we are getting through this entire policy manual by the end of the year.
Wow, there's an end.
Yes.
I never believed it.
And I'm trying to be optimistic and as I communicate with...
Yes.
Earlier, that we have a, we're hoping that while we're still chipping away at the 4000s, those few that Deb referenced, we're hopeful that there's a good opportunity that we may be able to bring a big portion of the 4000 series forward in December for our first read to start the expedite.
Wow.
And at that point, I think is when it's most appropriate to summarize some of the policies, because to do it now, and then you're going to get presented with it in a month or two, is not worth it. But, when we do get the next presentation, Policy Committee, it'll take a few minutes to just walk the board through them. All good, Michael?
You're making great progress.
We are.
I'm so impressed by the Policy Committee doing great work.
Tanya may remember how much fun it is.
So, moving on to liaison reports, is there anything that we shared related to Community Advisory Board or I.A.S.? One of our three experts in the room. Doing good stuff?
Yes, let's see. To recap, we have a very engaged group of students from middle school all the way up to juniors. And we have, and we have two, 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 two...
school all the way up to juniors, and we have, and we have two, 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 two good seniors who participate and give great feedback, I think. The big things, I guess, were, there was a lot of debrief on homecoming, and the kids making pledges, and feedback from the kids is, it feels a little played, because it was the same thing, rally towels from previous years, and...
This is for those who haven't gone through it, so, basically, to help students make better choices...
To make better choices during homecoming specifically, and some of the feedback that I thought was great from the kids is, that it was, they do this, they, they get pledges from the kids during the week, leading up to homecoming, and they actually wanna have tables at the different events during homecoming, so, and then the kids would have the items, whatever would be, at the various games, you know, to promote school spirit and everything else. And then it was also red ribbon week, that the kids were very busy, also, spreading the word on that and going in town, and with the bows on the, on the, on the trees and things. And then I think it was take-back, drug take-back day, two Saturdays ago, I believe, and Officer Tulane had reported the one prior to that, I think, they took in over eight pounds of medication.
Wow.
In one take-back. So, that's pretty, pretty big. And people should know that even though they do this every three months or so, that there is a permanent receptacle stationed in the police station, so you don't have to wait for these take-back days, if you wanna go in and turn in and unused medication, you can, and the little bottles, I know the Latin club collects those.
Oh.
I don't know why they collect it, but they collect them for something, they reuse it for something, I'm not sure what, but I know that if you rip off the labels, Señora Wong knows.
Magistra.
Magistra loves those bottles, so...
Ooh. Mystery, okay.
Wow.
They recycle for some reason.
She's speaking Latin, I didn't, sorry.
Yeah, very good. So then, food service wellness committee, or district safety, I see here, anything to...
Oh, but we can, we can, sorry about that.
Maybe I'll start, I'll stop calling them out, are there any liaison reports that anybody wants to share? I don't wanna put you on the spot.
I mean, we, we did attend a safety report and a safety committee on the date, we're not prepared to report.
Okay.
So I think we will wait for our next opportunity.
I think, just to provide a couple highlights.
Thank you.
We talked about, as we always do, review history of some accident reports and student injuries on school grounds, we talked about some of the initiatives associated with the upcoming capital project, and we talked about our ongoing efforts to make our schools more safe today, and reflecting on the steps that we've taken this year to make our schools safer, which includes of addition, you know, additional protocols, the training that's happened, more thorough drills and the like.
Yeah, a lot going on.
Yeah, we talked about the training that the teams had, there was more detailed training, that that was very well received by the school staff.
Wonderful. All right, I learned my lesson, I don't wanna put anybody on the spot, but there are other, I'm certainly curious, maybe at some other point, it could be an update, just to hear how, any shifts with the food service with, under our new plan, but I don't wanna put you on the spot if you wanna do another...
Sure, we did, we did talk about that at the wellness meeting, we talked about it's been a pretty good start this year. The full serve at Dow's Lane is going well, there is a little bit more waste of food right now, as the kids are, you know, rejecting some of the things that they don't wanna eat, but we're hopeful, we're hopeful that as they keep it on their plate, and they see others eating it, that they will get some of these healthy choices. So there's a little, just a little concern still, but we're, we're letting that go through for a while.
But in parallel, you also now have a food waste program.
Recycle, so we talked a lot about recycling, well, as well at the wellness meeting, and how we're trying to even enhance it by using paper instead of plastic, so that the kids have an easier time throwing things out, and writing receptacles, so, there's a lot going on in terms of that. So, you also talked about the fact that we've hired a consultant, the same consultant did our bid specs, to now also monitor our mark with me, so that I can have a little more consistency, 'cause they really know what to look for, as opposed to, like, I can look at a lot of things, but they, they found the fact that there was, you know, sugar in it, or high fructose sugar in the jam, I mean, like, they found that, like, in two seconds, and now that's gone. So I wouldn't have known to ask that, so, like, you really, you know, they really are looking for everything, so that, that's been really good, too.
Great.
So, we have a lot of oversight now.
That's wonderful.
How often are they coming in?
A couple times a year, but then they give me things to look for when I go out and do my little checks, 'cause I, I go out a lot, too, so, I have like no secret list now, but I can't share publicly.
It's kept right here. That's great. I also wanna thank everyone who, who participated at the New York State School Board Association Convention, I was here in New York at the end of the month, and I know that some of you went to special seminars to learn about communications, and about the latest legal issues related to school districts, so, that involves experts who come and share, and really give a lot of content and thinking for us to download, there's other presentations to attend, and Dr. Harris and you, and Mr. Lubinski even gave a presentation, it was very well received, and thank you for that.
Well, thank you. And, there was, I think, Deb for attending, that was Saturday morning, so we talk about commitment at times, Saturday morning.
It was excellent, highly recommended.
No, no, it wasn't good weather, certainly slippery out there, but the, but I also wanna highlight that we had a number of our students that were present, that had a student booth where they were highlighting some of the work related to the education, the Education Foundation's Innovation Fund, and I would, I, Mr. Lubinski and I have probably gotten ballpark of about a dozen emails, thus far, from other districts that were either in attendance at the workshop, or that talked to our kids, asking for information about the fund and projects, and looking, asked for copies of our Innovation Fund handbook and that, so they can look to replicate it elsewhere. But the exciting piece was that you were able to talk about our schools, and promote the good work that happens here in Irvington, and that's just one little window in, but know that, and Deb can attest to, where we talked about that, we talked about Irvington. And we told the Irvington story, that while we're there, and that's just one little segment of what we talked about within that hour, and our kids even window into their experiences. So it was a proud moment for our school district.
Great, yeah.
It was really cool.
It really was great. I actually would even suggest, you guys should take what you presented at some stage and let everybody see it, 'cause the slideshow was awesome, and then, obviously, what you had to say about the Innovation Fund was wonderful, but it would be great just for others to see it, for those who didn't get to go Saturday morning to see it live, it really was worthwhile. So, thanks for that.
Very good. Well, that was very informative, and I appreciate everyone providing the updates, and now we will move to our consent agenda, I believe, it's, we modified it to remove nine-five and nine-six. Some items in here include approval of past minutes, various agreements that we will recognize, several teachers at the end of the year, who have announced their resignations at this time, as well as staff. We're hiring substitutes, paying for clubs and coaches, dealing with tax certs, and thanking the PTSA for a number of grants, including, well, I'll thank them once we vote on it, but can I get a motion to accept our consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions related to any items before I call a vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And with that, I wanna thank the PTSA, which have provided over seven thousand dollars in grants, including the parent-child book club giveaway, Colonial Musician, upfront current events, embryology lesson, and birds and prey demonstration, that sounds exciting, and incubation in embryology chick, which hopefully we kept away from birds of prey.
But that's at Dow's.
Yeah. And again, the staples are getting in my way, hatching, and box-out bullying, so it sounds like a lot of great stuff. We have an opportunity for additional community comments at this point, if anyone would like to make a statement at the back.
Apparently short of the time.
You're also not as tall as Mr. Olley.
Hi, I'm Erin Bernstein, I'm the parent of a third grader at Dow's Lane, and I've only been here since 2010. I just wanna say thank you, your update on the curriculum committee was music to my ears, I'm hoping it means we're moving forward for something. I did wanna confirm, Raina, are you giving your presentation, I'm sorry, Raina, are you giving your presentation on December, is it eighteenth, about the recommendations? I remember hearing that in some prior board meetings.
There'll definitely be an update related to it, I think that's the timeframe.
Yeah, so we have an update that, that will reference it in December, not a full-on presentation, because we're still in the midst of the process, as you, you understand. But I think as we get into the budget process, when we talk about curriculum, we'll see if full on proposals that would surface at that time.
I just wanna say thank you, again, I appreciate it, so, thank you. Can I ask one other question? On the consent agenda, are we able to get information about any of these things?
Certain, certain items, once we approve them, become, I mean, I, public, some of them related to personnel or student matters remain private.
Confidential, okay.
Confidential, yeah.
It's just hard to tell what things are, it was just, like, I saw the classroom use, and I remember hearing after Easter seals was no longer in the school, that some people were concerned about that, so I didn't know what the contract for classroom use and maintenance with, those, like, I don't know, are they using our schools now? I didn't even, were you allowed to talk about that?
They've been using our schools, that's in the high school.
Okay, and they'll continue to use it, that's the idea?
For now, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Very good. So, we do actually have executive session anticipated, so our next meeting is Tuesday, November twentieth, at seven-thirty PM, as we start to gear up for Thanksgiving. And now, I guess we'll take a break, and then come back and start an executive session.
I still think you could vote.
Okay, we'll do a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of discussing personnel, matters related to personnel.
So moved.
All right, David, in second?
Second.
All right, Deb, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll take a four-minute break.
Hey, Michael, can I petition for an extra ten minutes, so I can go vote, please?
Or do you think it'll be so bad?
You haven't voted.
No, I haven't voted, I left before the polls opened.
Will it be so fast?
We'll be done, actually, well, I have to get home.